Good evening. The council meeting of August 6th will come to order. If you would please turn off or silence all electronic devices. And I would at this time invite the Mayor's Youth Leadership Class of 2019-2020 to approach the podium. They will be leading our Pledge of Allegiance this evening. And in the interim, if everyone else would please stand to honor God and country. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Father, we thank you for the independence, freedom, and opportunities our nation affords us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. Father, I personally thank you for this loving community and the outpouring of love and support they have shown me over the past five and a half weeks. I am grateful and thank you for neighbors and friends that have shown us your hands and feet with meals, with over a thousand cards, with flowers, and simply to sit and hold my hand. Thank you, God, for showing me a bit of heaven on earth. We love you. We're here to bring you glory and to do good for our neighbors. May your supreme oversight guide us in these proceedings. Amen. And now, hand to heart, as our Mayor's Youth Leadership Council leads us in the pledge.
... reaches to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And I would ask our council members to approach the podium. This is the first introduction of the 2019-2020 Mayor's Youth Leadership Council, and I would ask each of them to share their name, the year they're going into in school, and what high school they represent. I will briefly share of thirteen students, all residents of Temple Terrace. We have seven different high schools in our community represented, so we are very, very delighted with the impact they're going to be able to make community-wide.
Hi, everyone. My name is Caleb Colton. I'm going into 12th grade, and I attend Brooks de Barlo Collegiate High School.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Carson McCleod. I'm going into my junior year, and I attend Middleton High School.
And was just elected the president of the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council.
Hey, my name is Luke Purvis. I'm a 10th grader, and I go to Cambridge Christian School.
My name is Marie Nigel Lane. I attend Brooks de Barlo Collegiate High School, and I'm about to be a senior.
My name is Juliana Chalera, and I'm going to be in 11th grade, and I go to Tampa Catholic High School.
My name is Gabrielle Wiggins. I'm about to be in 12th grade, and I go to King High School.
And was just elected the vice president of the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council.
My name is Noah Purvis, and I am a senior at Cambridge Christian School.
My name is Silas Colton, and I'm a sophomore at Brooks de Barlo High School.
Thank you. And this is our Mayor's Youth Leadership Council of 2019-2020. Thank you all. Persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda, you can turn in a form to the city clerk to my right. And this evening, we have an opportunity to celebrate a business that has thrived and positively impacted our community for more than fifty years. If the clerk would please start the slideshow. I think they're having challenges. There is more. Oh, I heard there was, I thought it was a big slideshow. I apologize. There will be more singing and dancing later. If Ralph, Nancy, Jeff, and Chip, if the Lupton family would please approach the podium.
... blindside him with this. That's your doing, huh? Or yours. Or yours. I think they all had a hand in this.
A proclamation of the City of Temple Terrace. Whereas Lupton's Catering and Restaurants is one of Temple Terrace's most iconic restaurants since its incorporation in August 14, 1969. And whereas Lupton's was founded by Ralph Lupton Jr. and his wife Nancy, who were eventually joined by sons Chip and Jeff and their seven grandchildren in this family-oriented business. And whereas the Luptons have a creed of "You can't outgive the Lord." And with love of their community as one of their core values, they have quietly provided meals and other donations to Temple Terrace and the surrounding areas for over fifty years. And whereas Ralph Lupton has a special place in his heart for kids, and every year he and his family host a special picnic for foster families at his Plant City Ranch, the Luptons partner with Eckerd Connects, the largest child and family services agency in the state, at the outdoor picnic event to show appreciation to foster parents and their children. And whereas the Luptons believe feeding the community is vital, and they don't hesitate to help out when hurricanes impact Florida and emergency response teams are in need of sustenance. After hurricanes Wilma and Irma tore through the state, Lupton's provided food for Florida Power and Light crews in southern Florida in the wake of Hurricane Wilma, and Tampa Electric crews at the Tampa Greyhound Track in the wake of Hurricane Irma. And whereas Lupton's has provided meals and other donations to families of fallen soldiers, disabled veterans, and soldiers returning from tours of duty, as well as assisting with many City of Temple Terrace employee appreciation events. And whereas the Lupton family continues to give back to their fellow Temple Terrace residents and members of the surrounding communities through their charitable efforts. And whereas the City of Temple Terrace is grateful to the Lupton family for the generous contributions they have made to numerous organizations since 1969, now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, I do hereby proclaim August 14, 2019, as Lupton's Catering and Restaurants 50th anniversary to recognize the contributions and services that the Lupton family brings to Temple Terrace and the surrounding communities. Thank you, Lupton family.
It couldn't have happened without Nancy and the boys. Y'all blindside me. I'll catch up. It just takes just a second, right? But thank you all. Thank you for all for supporting us all these years, for eating that good barbecue, and for all that you've... You see, it's the city that puts forth, that makes us as citizens want to put forth. It really is. And you can't outgive the Lord. And Nancy and I and the boys came in this world with nothing. We're going to go out with nothing. But with His blessings, by golly, we ought to be able to do a little something while we're here. You know? I haven't figured out a way yet, but thank you all so much. It's quite an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take a couple. One more big smile. Come on.
Thank you all. And all of y'all, too. Thank you.
And just a brief moment. That's been in the works for about twelve months, right, Mr. Stevenson?
Yes, ma'am, it has been. In order to get Ralph here, we had to actually produce a little lie. He thought he was coming here to argue with DOT. So, I guess I could say, "I got you."
You did, brother.
If you want to fill out a public comment form and still have a comment for FDOT, we'll allow that. Councilman Chalera.
I just, we normally don't address them presentations, but I do want to say from the bottom of my heart that Mr. Lupton, you and your family have certainly been a very big part of Temple Terrace, the fabric of Temple Terrace. You set examples, and, you know, I was told one time that God's given us two hands, one to give and one to take, and He gave you two because you're always given. Ralph has never, Ralph and Nancy have never said no. Anytime there's an event, whether it's a celebration, a funeral, whatever it is, Ralph is always there with his family, serving the people, and they've never come back and asked for anything. I mean, these are true servants. They're great residents of Temple Terrace. They're, the boys are the two of the hardest-working boys that I've ever known. I knew Jeff back in high school, and he was working back then. So, you certainly, both of you, Mom and Dad, have set great examples. You have great kids, and your grandkids are in Temple Terrace, and you're continuing that example. So, I want to say, and I'm sure on behalf of this council, that thank you very much for staying in Temple Terrace, for giving to Temple Terrace, and being the wonderful family that you are.
And Ralph and Nancy, it's hard, it's hard for me because you're special friends. Rod loved you so very much, and I love you, and thank you for, again, you were there in such a big way to celebrate a life, and it's just, it's an honor to be able to celebrate your lives and your service to our community tonight. Thank you. Next, we'd ask Florida League of Cities Legislative Director Scott Dudley to approach the podium. As Scott comes forward, Florida League of Cities recently recognized municipal officials with Home Rule Hero Awards for their work during the 2019 legislative session. These local leaders earned this award for their efforts to protect home rule powers of Florida's municipalities and advance the league's legislative agenda. Home rule, for those who are unfamiliar but have heard the term, home rule is the ability for a city to address local problems through and by local decision-makers with minimal state interference. We thank you for being here tonight. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'm likewise happy to present you with the Home Rule Hero Award, and I appreciate everything you've done. And I'm looking forward to, as you know, I serve as the executive director of the League of Mayors also in my role, lots of hats that I wear for a skinny head. And looking forward to having you involved in that with us also.
And to the rest of the council, your public service, we thank you very much for it.
It is, it is a true servant's heart that brings people to serve on the city council or the county commission at the local level, and we were very, very appreciative of that. And we literally cannot do our job without you. First of all, there wouldn't be a League of Cities. But even on the, that's the sort of the macro level, but at the micro level, when I'm over at the Capitol lobbying on an issue, the worst thing in the world I can hear from legislators, well, I haven't heard from the, about, I haven't heard about this issue from my folks back home. And I have to just sort of tuck my tail in between my legs and kind of go out and say, "Well, need to change that," so I'll make some phone calls and get you all to get riled up and join the fight. But the Home Rule Hero Award is for those folks that, that we don't really have to call to get riled up, that they just get riled up and they join the fight when they first hear about the fight. They join in, and I'm really honored to be able tonight to be here to present to both you, Mayor, and to council member Don Hugh, the Home Rule Hero Award. It is really, actually, we do legislative appreciation awards that we give to legislators because, you know, they're the folks that are making, you know, pushing the buttons and all that stuff. But the Home Rule Heroes are the folks that when we ask, "How does this bill affect your city?" You all answer the call. When we ask, "Can you send a text? Can you send an email? Can you, you know, make a phone call?" Whatever it takes, you're doing that, and we really appreciate it. And all of you are doing it, but I want to say that the Home Rule Heroes, we have a list, there's a list, and it's worth looking at when you, when you get some time, look at the list of what it's required to be, to be a Home Rule Hero. It's a, it's a big lift, and so, it's a, it's a very prestigious award, and I'm really honored to be able to be here tonight to present it to you both. So, and with that, I'd like to do it, you want to do one at a time and then together? Okay? So, we actually added, so you're going to get not only this, which is pretty awesome, Home Rule Hero Award to council member Sherri Donahue, but we all, at the conference, you're going to get a ribbon that also says Home Rule Hero. And we added some more swag because, you know, we want to really make sure that you all are distinguished from, from the rest in giving you a Home Rule Hero button that you get to wear, that you get to sport around year-round. You don't have to wear your League of Cities name tag or carry this around with you. You can just wear this on your lapel or whatever, and you're set.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Didn't know swag came with it.
Yeah, exactly. Do we do separate, yeah, together? Is that... And Mayor?
And Mayor, I'm likewise happy to present you with the Home Rule Hero Award, and we appreciate everything you've done. And I'm looking forward to, as you know, I serve as the executive director of the League of Mayors also in my role, lots of hats that I wear for a skinny head. And looking forward to having you involved in that with us also.
And a big day.
Good, yes, indeed. Thank you very much, Mayor. And here's your extra special, so now you don't have to tell people you are, you can just show them.
I look forward to seeing you all at conference, those that are going. We have a great conference lined up. It's next week. It's going to be busy, busy, busy. We do not let you rest very much, so rest up now while you have the chance to do that. And look forward to seeing you at conference. And then, we start, the legislative committee meeting starts in September, and so we're back at it right away. They go into session in January, and hopefully next year, when I come to give Home Rule Hero Awards, I'll have to have a truck to bring them in, so I can give you all the Home Rule Hero Awards at the same time. So, I look forward to that, and thank you for a lot of...
Thank you for being with us, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'd ask our finance department staff to approach the podium. As our staff approaches the podium, the Government Finance Officers Association, known as the GFOA, established the Distinguished Budget Presentation Awards Program in 1984 to encourage and assist state and local governments in preparing budget documents at the very highest quality that reflect both the guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on State and local budgeting and the GFOA's best practices on budgeting. The GFOA recognizes individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal with the presentation of a certificate of recognition for budget preparation. And this evening, it is a delight to present to our finance department the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, presenting a certificate of recognition for budget preparation to the finance department of the City of Temple Terrace. This is the highest award in governmental budgeting and is presented to those governments whose budgets are judged to adhere to program standards. Congratulations to our finance department. Lynn, would you like to say a few words?
I would like to say a few words. Thank you so much for everyone's support on the council, and thank you very much, Mayor. This was definitely a surprise to us. We like to stay in the background. We definitely are very proud of our finance team, but I do have to point out, there's one in the shadows who's not here, and I call her my rock star, and that's Jeannie Barlow. And we couldn't be as successful as we are now without the, just very, very supportive Charles Stevenson, the city manager, who really helped us make sure that we would succeed. He's an amazing support to our team and our staff and our ability to do the job. So, thank you all very, very much.
And I would just add, I know with the Lupton surprise, Charles, I know you were a big part of it, but I know the behind-the-scenes person, Jeannie Barlow, absolutely is a rock and a support, and I think she touches every single department in this city, and thank you. And Jeannie, if you happen to be watching, thank you for all you do for our city. Next, board appointments. There is one vacancy on the Hillsborough County Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. The only applicant is Peter Davitt. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Peter Davitt for a term extending from August 6, 2019, until August 6, 2022?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion, council? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. And thank you, Mr. Davitt, for your willingness to serve our community. Next, there is one vacancy on the Hillsborough County Marine Law Enforcement Citizens Advisory Committee. We have one applicant, Ron Smith. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Ron Smith for a term extending from August 6, 2019, until August 6, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion, council? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your willingness to serve. If the minutes of the July 16, 2019 city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any corrections, council? Hearing none, minutes stand approved. Thank you. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda are items on the consent agenda. A three-minute time limit will be imposed for all comments from the public. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. During public comment on items not on the agenda, the city manager and our directors who are in the audience do make note of these items that are related to city business, so they will be followed up on. Our first person this evening, Mr. Jack Ritter.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I brought my, I guess, research material. There's probably better part of two reams of paper here, some of it duplicated. I'd like to talk to you just a minute about the Sunnyside property sale. First of all, I've read all of this stuff. I'm amazed. You people got a brief introduction to this from Mr. Stevenson on the 16th. You really need to know the backstory. The backstory goes like this. This property has been in negotiation since January of 18, back and forth, and all of the backstory reveals other things. I tried to find out how these bids on this property ranked. What was the criteria for ranking? There is no written criteria. The other thing that comes to mind is, how do we dispose of excess city real estate? Is there a procedure? Is there something in state law? Is there a ordinance in the City of Temple Terrace? Doesn't seem to be anything locally that governs that. I can find something at the state level, but I don't know if we're following that or not. There's just a lot of questions that I have, but my real point, I guess, here is, learn the backstory. We need to put all of these things in a transparent fashion in front of everybody so that you know exactly what we're talking about. There's other things that come out of this, two other pieces of property that I can find that were sold from the city without going out to bid. So, with that, I'll leave it to you. You can get the same pile of information, go through it, and decide what you want to do. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to bring this down a little. Annette Runney, 9512 Woodland Ridge Drive. I come before you tonight regarding a very serious concern I have regarding the recent request for proposals for two properties located at 202 and 204 Sunnyside. The request for the proposal stated buyer will reimburse seller $6,000 for costs related to surveys and appraisals. The costs for the surveys and appraisals were paid for by Habitat for Humanity in early February. The costs were incurred and paid for in early February, long before requests for proposals were issued in May of 2019. Normally, and in general, the city attorney would be responsible for drafting the request for proposals and would have incorporated the language, "buyer will reimburse seller $6,000 for costs related to surveys and appraisals." During a recent phone conversation with our city attorney, Ms. Shoshon, she stated that the city had not paid for the surveys and appraisals and supplied me with documentation when others would not, and I'm not referring to the city clerk's office because they were great, indicating that the city had not paid for the surveys or appraisals and no invoices were supplied to indicate anything different. The city manager, Charles Stevens, also knew that Habitat for Humanity had paid for surveys and appraisals. This was indicated in a memorandum that was discovered in recent request for records. The city's representatives knowingly made a misrepresentation, which is a violation of state statute. I would ask that the sale of the lots at 202 and 204 Sunnyside be halted until a forementioned matter be resolved. Thank you. The public hearing is now open. City Attorney Shoshon will address council. On ex parte communications, excuse me, Mary Ann.
Since this is a quasi-judicial matter, at this point, I would ask each one of you to state whether or not you have received any oral or written communications from anyone concerning this matter outside of the public hearing. If you've received anything in writing, please provide it to the clerk so that it may be made part of the record. If you've received any oral communication, if you'll please state when that was, where that was, and with whom the communication was made.
I have had none. I have had none.
I've had none other than the emails blasts that I entered into the record prior to the last hearing.
I've had none.
I've had none since the one I had before the last public hearing, and that's on record.
Thank you. We'll now turn it to city planner Mary Ann Habremsen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is the second public hearing and reading of RZP 1810 for zoning reclassification application for a property located at 13401 North 53rd Street. The owner and applicant is Tooth and Foot 2 LLC, the agent is Mazer Consulting, who are here with us this evening. Again, this project is located, or this request, excuse me, is located at 13401 North 53rd Street. The request is to rezone the property from residential seven to planned development on a property approximately 0.87 acres. This is the proposed concept plan, the same that you saw last time this came before you. There have been no changes between the last hearing and this one in regards to the layout of the, the concept plan itself. The applicant, again, is here, and they are available for further questions. Considerations for council when reviewing this application is that the planning commission did find the request consistent with the comprehensive plan, and if the rezoning is approved tonight, then the project impacts will be mitigated upon site plan review in accordance with our land development code. When the site plan, when the final site plan is reviewed by our development review committee. Can I stand for questions?
Would the property owner like to address council at this time?
Good evening, council members, and the mayor. My name is Tyler Hudson. I'm the attorney for the property owner. I know you have a pretty packed agenda, so I'm going to be very brief. The extent of my presentation is really just to thank council for your open mind and incisive... The agent is Mazer Consulting, who are here with us this evening. Again, this project is located, or this request, excuse me, is located at 13401 North 53rd Street. The request is to rezone the property from residential 7 to planned development on a property approximately 0.87 acres. This is the proposed concept plan, the same that you saw last time this came before you. There have been no changes between the last hearing and this one in regards to the layout of the concept plan itself. The applicant again is here, and they are available for further questions. Considerations for counsel when reviewing this application is that the planning commission did find the request consistent with the comprehensive plan, and if the rezoning is approved tonight, then the project impacts will be mitigated upon site plan review in accordance with our land development code. When the site plan, when the final site plan is reviewed by our development review committee. Can I stand for questions?
Would the property owner like to address counsel at this time?
Good evening, council members, and the mayor. My name is Tyler Hudson. I'm the attorney for the property owner. I know you have a pretty packed agenda, so I'm going to be very brief. The extent of my presentation is really just to thank counsel for your open mind and incisive questions at the last hearing. I think this has really improved the project. This obviously has been in the works for some time. There were some conditions that were discussed at the last hearing regarding, in particular, about parking, about making sure that the lot for this new parcel is designated for employee parking only. That's one of the final conditions of approval. That's in your meeting packet. That's something that we're 100% on board with, and we agree with all the conditions that staff has worked on. Really want to thank Mary Ann for her and her team's really helpful work in getting this project to this point, and I'll be available to answer any questions after public comment rebuttal. Thanks.
Thank you. We do have one comment sheet on this item. Mr. Steven Geros.
My name is Steven G. Jeros, the president of Pleasant Terrace Civic Association, which incorporates this area under discussion. This is the fifth time I, oh, I live in Temple Terrace, fifth time I've been here discussing this item. This is the fifth meeting. I believe at the second meeting, you all voted unanimously to disapprove it, representing your voice of the people, representing us, the neighbors, the residents of this area, neighborhood area. Subsequent to that, you received a letter that implied legal action against you if you did not do a reconsideration and take into account whatever. At the next meeting, you all found various reasons to look at this even further. Then at the subsequent meeting, you really found reasons, a lot of pontification about site visitation, studying zoning, all kinds of zoning requests, how wonderful businesses are maintained, and at that point, you unanimously approved it. The only major change that had been made to the item was that they could decide they're going to put a wall that you hope will prevent any traffic from ingressing, egressing down 53rd Street into our neighborhood. You are supposed to represent the voice of the people. So far, your last vote did not indicate that. We are residents. Those homes will be there long after this business decide to go someplace else. As the famous Civil War General Munson said, vox populi, vox humbug. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, would the property owner like to address the raised concerns? City council, do you have questions for the applicant or staff? Public hearing is now closed. If the clerk would please read the title of ordinance 1482.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 0.87 plus minus acres of land located south of Fletcher Avenue and east of 53rd Street with an address of 13401 North 53rd Street from zoning classification, single-family residential 7 to planned development for RZP 1810, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1482?
I move to approve.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. I would ask all in favor to signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, item 8B, a first public hearing and reading to adopt an ordinance approving the comprehensive plan amendment for 11407 North 52nd Street, CPA 19-01. The public hearing is now open. If City Attorney Shishon would please address counsel on disclosing any ex parte communications.
The reason why I'm doing this again is there is a continuing debate as to whether a comp plan amendment associated with a single parcel is legislative or quasi judicial. And since the powers that be can't seem to come to a conclusion, we will take an abundance of caution. If this is quasi judicial, I will ask each council member if you have had any written or oral communications prior to this hearing with regard to this particular matter. If you've received anything in writing, please provide it to the clerk so that it can be made part of the record. And if you have received any oral communications, if you will state what those are, when they were, where they were, and with whom they were. Thank you.
I've had none.
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 And with that, Mark Hudson, Executive Planner, Hillsborough County, City County. Planning Commission will explain this item.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Again, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. The Planning Commission staff has processed one plan amendment for the city of Temple Terrace this cycle. And if I could get the PowerPoint up. This plan amendment is TT CPA 1901, and we have a public hearing tonight and also one on August 20th. This shows you the location of the plan amendment. It is just a few blocks from City Hall on 52nd Street, basically on the border of the city of Temple Terrace and the city of Tampa. This is a little bit closer aerial to give you a sense of the area. To the north of the aerial is East Fowler Avenue, which is a designated multimodal facility in your comprehensive plan. Directly north of the plan amendment site is the public supermarket. The site itself is circled by the lavender dash line. It is composed of one vacant lot and also the 52nd Square Apartment Complex, which is 14 units that currently exist today. Across from that is also the Pebble Woods Apartment Complex in the city of Tampa. To the south and east are professional offices which all reside within the city of Temple Terrace. As we have a little bit of background to the plan amendment, this was privately initiated. It is small scale at only 1.72 acres. Therefore, we are not required prior to adoption by city council to transmit this to the Department of Economic Opportunity. The applicant is requesting to go from his current land use, which is office institutional, to residential 18, predominantly for the fact that he would wish to develop this with additional multifamily units. I took some photos of the area to give you a little sense of the area and the surrounding neighborhoods. In particular, this is the affected parcel, or the Vega parcel to the south, looking east from 52nd Street. And this will be the site where the additional multifamily units would be built, if approved. This is the existing 52nd Square Apartment Complex, which the applicant plans to rehab and to incorporate into this overall development. This is 52nd Street looking north. On the right is Temple Terrace. Also, I would note that there are pedestrian facilities, i.e. sidewalk. On the left side or the west is the city of Tampa, and particularly, you can see the edge of the Pebble Woods Apartment Complex. Directly across from that apartment complex are two single-family homes that are in the city of Tampa. I would note that the land use on this, and you'll see in a moment on the land use map, has a Tampa land use of residential 35 or 35 units per acre. And this is the Pebble Woods Apartment Complex in the city of Tampa, which has a residential 50 or 50 units per acre in the city of Tampa. And these are some of the professional offices to the south and some of the professional offices to the east. This shows you the close proximity of the apartment complex to the public supermarket. As I noted, the area is served by pedestrian amenities, particularly sidewalks. As you can see in this, the residents have found a shorter path to gain access to that commercial activity. This is the future land use map as it stands today. You can see the crimson color of the office institutional uses of Temple Terrace. To the north of that is the red color of commercial for Temple Terrace. The dashed blue line running down 52nd Street is the border between Temple Terrace and Tampa. And you can see on the west side of that is the brown color of the residential 35 in Tampa, and the darker brown color is the residential 50 in Tampa. If this plan amendment was approved by city council on the 20th, this is how the map would change. It would change to the brown color of the Temple Terrace residential 18. So what are the impacts? Currently, on its land use of office institutional, 15 dwelling units would be allowed on the two parcels. This would increase to 30 if it was approved. Also, this property meets the locational criteria for the business intensity zone overlay by being its close proximity to Fowler Avenue, multimodal corridor. And therefore, if the applicant goes through several, meets several development standards, they can increase that to 38 units. My understanding, and the zoning you'll hear later, they are intending to meet those additional standards and get those additional eight units. I will say that if those are granted, that is about 22 units per acre, which is still substantially less than what is allowed on the west side of 52nd Street in Tampa, which is residential 35 and residential 50. Also, I would note that the non-residential uses, the square footage based on this change would actually decrease, so some entitlements would be lost on the non-residential side. Our staff did feel that this application was compatible with the surrounding area and also was within the vision established in the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. And particularly, we looked at a lot of goals, objectives, and policies. The complete policies are noted in your packet, but in general, those policies are related to future land use, neighborhood conservation, community development, multimodal corridors, major activity centers, growth management, citywide redevelopment strategies, provisions of public facilities and housing, and we felt that those policies supported the applicant's proposal for residential 18. We did present this to the planning commission on June 10th at a public hearing, and a unanimous vote by the planning commission board found this consistent with your Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. Of course, we're here to present entertaining questions you may have today, and also, we will be back to present this also on August 20th. And with this, we would recommend at your subsequent meeting on the 20th, that after receiving public comment, at that public hearing, we recommend that you approve an ordinance approving TT CPA 1901 and finding it consistent with the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have. I would also note that the applicant is not here tonight. I believe he's on his honeymoon, but if there is any questions that I cannot answer or your staff cannot answer, we could be sure to propose, inquire those questions to him, and be prepared to respond to them on August 20th. And with that completes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item, and I do have two slips. First, Mr. Tom Roberts.
Andy, how you doing? I live at 11406 North 56, which is right across the street from the proposed changes. My main concern is the traffic on 56th Street. Right now, it's like a raceway out there at times, and we very seldom see TPD or Temple Terrace PD patrolling the area, looking for speeders. Now, how somebody has not been, well, we almost had a person hit a couple weeks back. He was on a bicycle, or a truck was coming down 52nd Street, and he came off the bike and hit his head on the concrete. But with the increase in the units that they want to put in, I'm worried about the increase in the traffic on that street. So, and basically, that's my main concern on it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, folks.
Next, Pat Roberts.
My name is Pat Roberts. I live at 11406. I have lived there since December of 2000, and the neighborhood is dicey at best, and there are no, we, I haven't seen a police officer patrol that area in I don't know how long, and either from Temple Terrace or from Tampa. The traffic is unbelievable. The speeding is unbelievable. We had one of our cats killed by somebody driving by, obviously. They ran the cat flat. I just, I don't understand why anything of this magnitude would be allowed in that small of an area. We live right up against the Tico Lines, and the next thing is Ryan's, the old Ryan's property. This thing has been empty forever, okay? It has been through so many businesses or proposed businesses going into that place. Nothing ever happens there, and I had found at one time that it was because of a high sinkhole risk there, okay? They had done a lot of soil samples and all that. And the property still remains empty. It is, we have so many homeless over there. I'm watching people living under the trees for Ryan's, urinating all over the place. Nothing's done about it, okay? And we are on the end of that street, okay, of 52nd Street. The traffic is unbelievable, okay? The people that are over there are unbelievable. They hang out over at Ryan's. They're up and down the street. We have a lot of pedestrians over there, and I just, when I saw this, I thought, I know I must be imagining something to have this kind of a project going into that area when we don't, we have no control over anything because we're right at the center, okay? We're Tampa, the other side is Temple Terrace, and nothing is done. These people just, it's like lawlessness, you know? We went through all the drug people, all the drug traffic at that apartment complex because it's a horseshoe. So they would pull in, they would barely stop as they're getting their drugs, okay, from the dealers that used to live in those apartments. It took a long time for Temple Terrace to take care of it, but they got control of it. We have not had any problems from that for, I don't know, years, okay? But that much more traffic, I don't know how we're going to be able to handle it. It's absolutely terrible. There is no, there's no speed humps, there's no speed bumps, there is nothing. And they use that as a shortcut. Instead of going down 53rd or going down 56, they're running, I don't have a speed gun, I can't prove this, okay, but they're going, and they're like 55, 60 miles an hour, you're out there screaming, "Slow down." We've got kids, we've got animals running all over the place over there, and nothing's done. And so, I really am asking you to please reconsider this because we'll be back on the 20th, and I'm hoping I'll have more neighbors here with me because this, I just don't see how it's going to work. I really don't. I'm totally against it.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. I would ask counsel if you have any questions for Mr. Hudson.
I just have one question.
Councilwoman Donahue.
How many, how many units are going to be added? And when they rehab the units that are there, are they going to remain as whole units and until this is just an addition?
That is my understanding. My understanding, there's 14 units there today, and there would be another 18 units for a total, I think, I think that adds a 30, it's be a total of 38.
Mm-hmm.
Just 24 more. Thank you for the math, Mary Ann. So, so the additional 24 units.
Okay.
14 there today. And I can't speak to the issue concerning the presence of law enforcement or any geology issues concerning sinkholes. I will say that the planning commission did a cursory transportation analysis, not based on what's there today, but what it could potentially be built there under the entitlements the property currently has, which is on the office institutional and what is being asked for, which is the residential 18. So if both of those land uses were built to their maximum development potential, what would be the impacts? And our staff found that actually, under its current land use, it potentially would generate more trips than this actual land use category. Now, the city staff may be able to discuss what types of transportation analysis they will do as part of the rezoning for the PD, but our cursory analysis that we did, the planning commission, determined that this land use actually generates less trips than, based on its entitlements, than the one it currently has.
That's good to know, and I see that our police chief has reacted and spoken to the residents, so that's very good to know. Thank you. Thank you for answering the question.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Hudson?
Yes, real quick, who's responsible for the road? Is that Tampa or Temple Terrace?
Mr. Stevenson.
I'm sorry. Who's responsible for the roadway on 52nd? Tampa or Temple Terrace?
52nd.
That's a good question. I don't know. Vinnie, you got an answer?
Yes, that's City Tampas.
City Tampa.
Yes.
Are there any?
The whole road?
Yes, 52nd is over there.
Sometimes we split it down the middle. Good questions.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Hudson? The public hearing is now closed. If the clerk would please read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan, future land use map for one parcel of land located south of Fowler Avenue and east of 52nd Street, consistent with approximately 1.72 acres, by changing the future land use designation on said property from office institutional to residential 18 for CPA 1901, providing for amendment to the official zoning, official future land use map of the city, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance approving the comprehensive plan amendment for 11407 North 52nd Street.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Councilman Chisler.
I'm not going to support this. This is certainly not the type of product that I'm looking for to expand in Temple Terrace. Based on the pictures I saw, this is the type of property that creates. Not desirable. We have properties in Temple Terrace that are desirable. And this one, just by the looks of it, is one of those areas that are challenged. Let me put it that way. So it's not the type of, it's not what you're going to see in downtown Temple Terrace. So I'm not going to support it. I just want to say why.
Thank you. Councilman Chisler.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I too was coming to the meeting not supporting the issue based upon what I'd seen until Mr. Shon indicated that we're sitting quasi-judicial as opposed to a legislative body at this point. So I'm a little concerned. I too do not like the, what we're trying to do in that particular spot. But I'm concerned that we're going to get ourselves into another one of those... What basis are we denying it? Do we have a legal footing to deny it? So I tend to agree with Mr. Chisler. I don't see this as something that we want in Temple Terrace at this point. We have enough of it. So I'm planning on voting against it and hopefully it doesn't spring back on us.
Thank you. Councilman Chisler, are there other comments?
Madam, just to back up my... You know, I'm concerned about the traffic. I'm concerned about the crime. My mic's on. I'm concerned about the traffic. I'm concerned about the crime. It's not like I'm opposed. Obviously, I've sat here and supported the multifamily in the redevelopment area. So I'm not opposed to that. There's certain elements that are not impacting. And I think by approving this, the impact of this type of use expansion would certainly be detrimental to this area. Unlike the one we just approved prior to that, that road's cut off. And that traffic cannot flow through that neighborhood where this property is free for all, have at it. It makes it even more complicated when Tampa's on one side and Temple Terrace is on the other. So it's not so much the use. I'm more concerned about this type of product will impact our services, our resources, and all the above. And I, you know, I believe the way it sits in an office environment, our resources are less impacted. We've stated that numerous times when we talked about annexing the industrial park. There's less strain on your resources. So that's sort of the approach that I'm on the grounds that I'm denying it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Chisler. Councilwoman Donahue.
Yeah, I just want to explain my, the reason I'm supporting this is that we have what is, has been a, an apartment complex that was not what we would like in our city. And it appears that we have someone who is willing to completely rehabilitate this, these buildings that are there now and then add more, including some commercial. So, and just as the Planning Commission, thank you, Mr. Hudson, pointed out, you know, because of the way the land use is written on this piece of property, you know, he could decide to turn it all into commercial and/or some other institution. And then traffic would be even worse. So, so looking at the fact that the buildings are going to be completely rehabbed with new buildings, considering how close we are to USF and, and other areas that are looking for this type of small housing, I, I felt like there was no reason for me not to support this. So I understand, hear what you're saying about the traffic. But again, we're not supposed to speculate, so I'm not.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign?
Nay.
Motion fails. Thank you. Next, item 8C, a first public hearing and reading to adopt an ordinance approving the zoning reclassification of 11407 North 52nd Street. The public hearing is now open. Once again, City Attorney Shoshon.
Did you want me to address us going forward? Or did you want me to go along with this? I think that the question has come up since the ordinance just now on the comp plan amendment was voted down, that there did not seem to be a reason to move forward with the next part of this, which would be to approve the zoning reclassification. But if staff feels that there's any reason to do that... No? Okay.
We cannot go through a rezoning process without changing the comp plan amendment first.
Next, we will move on to item 8D, a resolution approving a Safe and Sound Hillsborough Agreement. Executive Director Freddie Barton will explain. Good evening, Mr. Barton.
Good evening, council members. Again, Freddie Barton, Executive Director for Safe and Sound Hillsborough, formerly the Violence Prevention Collaborative of Hillsborough County. I'm here before you to do several things. One, thank you for your participation and assistance in our efforts. The City of Temple Terrace has always been a strong supporter of Safe and Sound and our efforts to promote safety in our community and also to protect our most valuable asset, which are youth. You've also been a great partner in several of our other planning initiatives, including giving us in-kind support and printing and some marketing materials in addition to your financial support. I'm here to give an update on our efforts and explain our annual report as well as ask you to entertain the motion to extend the interlocal agreement for an additional three years as suggested by the leadership council. I have a presentation that's up. So for those who are not as familiar with Safe and Sound, I'll give you a brief introduction to us and then talk about some of our efforts and some of the things that are coming down the pike. Awesome, okay. Before I get started, I would like to take a moment of personal privilege to have a moment of silence for those victims impacted, the shootings in Texas and Ohio. Thank you. The vision of Safe and Sound Hillsborough is to work together to build strong families, safe schools, and healthy neighborhoods. And unfortunately, I'm here to ask your support, your continued support in light of the recent tragedies that we've seen. When Safe and Sound Hillsborough was recent, was first started, it was started as a national call to action on a local level in response to the tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut. When we saw the shooting at Sandy Hook Elementary, we wanted to ask the question, what can we do to prevent the random shooter from occurring? What can we do to make sure this doesn't occur here in Hillsborough County? And after many discussions, the answer was not much. Because at that point, when someone gets to that point, that they want to inflict harm upon themselves or someone else, there's very little that we can do. But what we can do is focus on what gets a person to that point in the first place, swimming upstream and taking a public health approach to reduce and prevent this thing from happening in the first place. And that's why Safe and Sound Hillsborough was formed. Our values and our objectives are simple. We believe that violence is preventable. We know that we've been trying to stop violence since Cain killed Abel. So it didn't happen overnight, and it's not going to be solved overnight. But we can work together to prevent it from growing out of control and affecting our youth and our communities. We want to address gaps to ensure that our children and our youth and our communities have nurturing and supportive families. We want to build on strengths of our youth and communities. We want to promote value of equity so that everyone feels that they have an equal voice in what goes on in their community. And we focus on those who are at risk. And sometimes we hate saying "at risk" because right now, in 2019, everyone is at risk. It doesn't matter if you live in Tampa or Temple Terrace, West Chase or West Tampa. We are all at risk if we do not come together. We take the public health approach. We know right now, in the wake of the shootings that happened in Ohio and Texas, that we now are taking a very reactive approach. We're trying to heal the people that have been, heal the communities that have been affected, including us here in Hillsborough County and Tampa, Florida. But we have to ask ourselves, what gets us to this point in the first place? The graphic that you see is a very simple illustration. We don't want to focus downstream where we're reacting and admitting people to hospitals and we're trying to arrest ourselves out of this problem. We swim upstream and find out what causes this in the first place. Do we have adequate supports for mental health? Do we have adequate supports for substance abuse? Are we putting things in place in the minds and hearts of our youth to make them feel that they have value so that they feel that there are ways out of the, out of the, you know, systemic issues that we're facing every day? Do we have proper supports? And do we have great partnerships in our communities in order to move things forward? We take that public health approach and use data to help us make decisions. We want to, on the short end, increase coordination of resources, build positive relationships and attachments with families, and create and promote community connectedness, making sure that we increase social connectivity at the grassroots level and spread that throughout our community. We want to decrease mental health problems. We want to decrease alcohol and substance abuse. And we want to decrease neighborhood deterioration, including looking at things, looking at blight, looking at the physical built environment and how they breed crime and violence in our community and address that from a policy perspective. Our long-term outcomes are very simple. We want to do what we have to do in order that youth feel safe in their community and that we prevent community violence. It's not the big random shooter. It's not the big mass tragedies. Those are those isolated incidents. We don't want those to occur. But what we really want to focus on is making sure that we don't have that community violence that occurs. Focusing on bullying, focusing on domestic violence, focusing on all those things that if we do not attack at a very grassroots and localized level, can have a widespread effect on our community at large. So we created our strategic plan, and we focused on four major goals. Improving the health and well-being of families, which focuses on mental health first aid, substance abuse intercepts, domestic violence reentry, and support services. Creating cultivated communities basically says, let the residents have a buy-in into what's going on in their community. And if they don't, teach them how to use their voices for advocacy. Improving neighborhood conditions, including social programming, looking at the built environment, addressing place and space, and then giving neighborhoods the opportunity to improve at the grassroots level. And maximizing our impact, making sure that we don't try to do the work ourselves but that we leverage partnerships. And again, thank you to the City of Temple Terrace for your willingness to be a strong partner. Thank you for giving us one of the greatest vice chairs we could ever have in Chief Albano. I ask that you personally tell him after this meeting to make sure that he stays on for not just three years, but 30 at the leadership council level so that we still have a strong voice. And please entertain becoming the Chair of Safe and Sound Hillsborough whenever Chair Julian Holt decides no longer that that's in her role. So thanks, Chief, for saying yes to that. We want, we want to give you a snapshot of how Safe and Sound is governed and how we operate. At the top, we in our leadership council, it's a partnership between Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, all three cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, the State Attorney's Office, the Public Defender's Office, the School District, the Sheriff's Office, the Administrative Office of the Court, and the Children's Board. All of the button pushing agencies of the county came together and said, enough is enough. We need to put things in place so that we can prevent community violence and give our youth and community at large a chance to see things and quality of life improve. But what really makes our efforts work at the very center of that graphic are the actual residents themselves. We focus, we know Hillsborough County's over 1,000 square miles. We had to start somewhere. We picked four target areas based on our data. We picked East Tampa, the university area, which actually creeps up into small portions of Temple Terrace, Plant City, and South County. And we built community advisory councils that consist of residents and stakeholders in and around those areas that help us get the work done. We know that we can't do it ourselves. We have to work with the residents. And we've been able to see great gains. And we've been able to establish trusting relationships with the residents and stakeholders in those target areas. We also have our support committees, data and evaluation, grant writing, and communications that help us drive our activities. So a quick snapshot of what's been happening in 2018. We continued on with our youth mock trials program. We actually worked with youth at Greco in the previous year. And those youth mock trials really focus on preventing gun violence and preventing accessibility of guns in the hands of our youth. We want them to understand that it's not cool to just walk around with someone that you know that has a gun. We want you to understand that it is cool to talk to law enforcement if you think that there's something that's going on that needs attention. We want them to know that it's not cool to think that you should not talk to law enforcement for any reason whatsoever. And it is cool to make sure that you talk to your peers about why gun violence is so wrong. We started working on workforce development initiatives. And in Plant City, in partnership with the EDC there in the Improvement League of Plant City, we started Plant City Jobs, an initiative to get Plant City residents hired on with Plant City businesses. And through that effort, we were able to see 16 individuals get hired on this pilot initiative, bringing salaries into that plant and keeping salaries in that Plant City community well over half a million dollars, including benefits. Knowing that we have to bring and keep mental health at the forefront of every conversation, we started our mental health first aid trainings. We've gotten 19 individuals trained as facilitators. Thanks to the Simply Foundation, we've received a grant to expand that. And we're looking at getting individuals here, even in Temple Terrace, trained as not just, not just getting trained in mental health first aid, but actually to become the facilitator so that we can put on sessions even here. And we've had conversations with the city manager and mayor about doing just that at maybe one of the facilities and centers here. And we increased our youth programming. We had 17 specialized youth events. We enrolled 331 new youth into programs throughout the county. Knowing that we had to look at place and space, we have been able to acquire the programming rights at two facilities. Kings Forest Recreation Center, which is on Chelsea Street, right behind the fairgrounds. It was formerly dormant for about 12 years. Yet we found out that there were nearly 200 youth that live within a two-mile radius of that facility and had nothing to do. And the question was asked, well, why do we have a high or one of the highest juvenile arrest records or rates in that area? Well, it's very simple. Open up the darned park and let us do some things and keep these kids positively engaged. We started that effort in 2016, and we've been able to see it thrive, so much that the county has asked us to take on a new park in the Town and Country area. And we now are operating Sandy Peron Park. We have a partnership with Hillsborough County Schools to address place and space within the school district, including Greco. We want to make sure that we have widespread community impact. So we continued on with our Violence Prevention Conference, Safe Summit 19. This year, we had over 250 participants to come together to talk about issues that will help us prevent community violence. One of those things, the power of Safe and Sound really lies in its ability to work with residents and address things from a policy perspective because of our leadership council. So we put on the first public policy town hall forum where we really talked about what policies need to be addressed to make sure that we address mental health as well as out-of-school time opportunities for youth, workforce development, and overall criminal justice and juvenile justice reform efforts. We had a great impactful conversation. Thanks again to Chief Albano for actually participating in that and helping us keep things going. And again, addressing mental health, we put on our first Faith and Wellness Mental Health Forum as well, and we're going to expand that throughout the county. We plan to have at least one quarterly conversa, community conversation to address mental health, knowing we cannot let this go. We wanted to make sure that not just you and our partners locally understand what's going on with Safe and Sound Hillsborough, but to take our message abroad and let other folks know what we're doing. We've been highlighted by the U.S. Attorney's Office. Safe and Sound was an offshoot of Project Safe Neighborhoods. And so we had the Deputy Secretary from the U.S. Attorney's Office to come down and to learn more about Safe and Sound and promote our efforts. We are part of the My Brothers Keeper Network, which is a national call for cities to address increasing equity and opportunity for young boys and men of color. And the City of Milwaukee has asked us to come and talk about our strategic plan, how we use GIS data to help drive decisions, and how we created such an interlocal agreement that got all these organizations together to play nice in the sandbox. And so we've been able to provide technical assistance to the City of Milwaukee to create such an effort. We also are doing the same thing in Oakland, California. And in Washington, DC, we just were recognized by the FBI to receive a national recognition from the FBI Director Ray through his Director's Community Leadership Award Initiative. And so we're making sure that our, the work that we're doing is highlighted and that other people know the great work that's being done in Hillsborough County. And we ask, well, why do we do the work that we do? And it's very simple. I have a video that will show you why we do what we do and who really we're trying to impact.
Every day around 6:00 in the morning, people get up to start their day. And every day around 6:00 in the morning, a youth has to make an important decision.
We have to work together to save our youth, protect their future, and prevent the unnecessary violence that happens in our community. Our youth need to know that there are people that are here for them. We got to get them back to the village concept. I can't do it alone, though. I need your help.
We won't tolerate F schools. Our youth need us all. We will work hard, let them know that we care for them above all else. Teaching... Teaching won't end in the classroom. After-school programming is needed. Volunteerism is needed. The schools can help save lives. Our churches need to come together to work in our community, to bring people together. Doesn't matter your faith, it matters that we love and care for one another.
It's going to take residents, college students, volunteers of all ages to help us all in our fight.
Here in Hillsborough County, we want to prevent our young people from running toward a life of crime, drugs, and violence. It's up to us to be their guardians, to protect them and help them see there is another way, a better way, a better life. We've got to mentor the youth, interact with them in the street, let them know we are here for them. We've got to do more.
We all play a part in reducing violence. We all play a part in protecting our youth. We all play a part in securing our future.
Don't do this, I got you.
To get involved, participate, mentor, it takes a connected village.
Not just one of us, all of us, teachers, officers, churches, parents.
Help us run the race. We are Safe and Sound Hillsborough.
We can stop it at that point. And that's who we are, and that's why we do the work that we do. I'm here to thank you for your participation and your support, and I'm also here to ask you for your continued support. And one last request, I'd like, Mayor, if I could, to get some contact information to really engage and work with the youth of the Leadership Council.
Thank you. Thank you, Executive Director Barton. I would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? I see Ellen Snelling coming to the podium.
Good evening. Just wanted to say that I'm very much supportive of Safe and Sound Hillsborough, and the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance has been part of collaborating with this organization, and I think they're a great group. And I know we've talked about in the past, like just specifically, a group that was aiming at stopping gun violence, but I think this group is just so well-rounded at looking at all those various factors that lead to it, and that certainly is a problem, but I just think looking at mental health, substance abuse, all those things, and they're doing a great job, and I love the video, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snelling. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the resolution extending the Safe and Sound Hillsborough Agreement. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I have a question.
Second.
We have a second now, discussion and questions.
How do you, I mean, all these are wonderful, I mean, all these initiatives are great with the youth, but how do you measure your effectiveness? What are your milestones?
So we have 19 different data indicators that we track, including middle school truancy, high school truancy, we look at domestic violence rates in our areas, it's a lot of indicators. However, we tie all of our activities to our four strategic plan goals. So when we put on different events, we have to tie them based on our indicators. Out of the four goals, we're hitting 82% of every single one of our measures and our outcomes. The question is, is why aren't you hitting 100%? Well, it's the world of prevention, right? And prevention takes a long ROI. We have to wait to see in two to three years, are the youth that we're working with, do they move to the next level in school, are they graduating, or do they regress or go into the juvenile justice and/or criminal justice system? Takes time to measure that, but we have a data dashboard that we track, not only internally but also with several providers that we subcontract our work with. So we have a daily data dashboard that we track, where we can proudly say that we've hit every single one of our measurable goals for this year. We can certainly send you our data dashboard, but the toughest challenge is, and I have to painfully say this, is in our work, it's very hard, and sometimes it's a work of struggle because we know that we're moving the needle, we know that we're working in our community, we can give you our outputs every single day, and then Texas happens, and Ohio happens.
What I'd like to, just a suggestion, I don't even know, I mean, I don't know how soon you'll be back, if I'll even be here, but personally, what I look for in these things, because you're competing for the same money that the Boys and Girls Club and, you know, they're Big Brothers, Big Sisters, there's a lot of different organizations doing good things with the youth. The question becomes, how do you split this dollar up? For me, just me personally, I like to see outcomes, not just outputs. I'd like to see some data in this report that says, okay, we targeted these census blocks, this is what we did in this park, the arrest rates went down, recidivism went down, truancy is a good measure, that's a good valid measure. I'd like to see some of that, because there's all wonderful, the things you're doing, but everybody's doing wonderful things and showing nice videos, and they, you know, they sound great, and they're lovely, and they are, but we're trying to assess how much bang are we getting for the buck, and that's, we need data.
Absolutely. One of the things I'd like to point out is, at the very beginning of Safe and Sound, we created through our strategic plan several maps, and we use GIS to drive that. We had to wait until the end of the five-year period so that we could now work with the Sheriff's Office and our Data Committee to line it up and see where we are. We're going through that process right now, but that data won't be released until at least at the end of the, or the sunset of the five years. So you will be seeing that in a GIS format, so we can see where, and we've already seen several of our deep red areas, we've worked in East Tampa, that's turned from a deep red area as far as middle school truancy to now it's moving into an amber color, in a lighter orange. So we are able to visually see that, and then we're going to get some more qualitative data. USF, through their College of Public Health, is one of our evaluation partners, so they're able to drive some things too. So you will see that, yes.
Is there any other discussion? I would comment, in working with several cities and counties, the mental health first aid, those cities and counties that have employed it have had demonstrable measurables on out-of-school suspensions, on out-of-school referrals, and on youth being able to get assistance. Again, we know prevention is much harder to measure than reactive measures, but the mental health first aid is something that, when I met with Executive Director Barton, very interested in bringing to our youth coaches, to our ministers, there are some of the surrounding counties to Hillsborough that have employed it and are getting measurable, impactful results in a very solid fashion. If there is no other discussion, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you, motion carries. Thank you, Executive Director, if you'd step forward, I think you were looking for contact Thank you. Next, a resolution approving a contract for construction of handicap accessible baseball field. Leisure Services Director Carl Langfeld will explain. Mr. Langfeld.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. I come to you tonight requesting approval of a resolution awarding a contract to Burke Construction Group in the amount of $430,740.35 for the construction of the handicap baseball fields out at the family complex on the grounds of Lewis Elementary School. This project has been in the works now for what seems like forever. We originally received word about funding for the project in fiscal year 2017, 2018, at which point we contracted with Cardinal Engineering for design and engineering services for this project. There are multiple stakeholders involved in this project, from the state of Florida, who provided $250,000 for this project, with Hillsborough County, who matched those funds so very generously in the amount of another $250,000 through our cooperative use agreement with Hillsborough County School Board, who allow us to do this on their property, and of course with Buddy Baseball, who has been a partner in this from the very beginning. So thank you, Russ, for everything that you do with this as well. Challenges that we faced in this project have to do mostly with working with all of those different stakeholders in this project, with the school board and their requirements, and the state of Florida and their requirements. The biggest challenge that we ran into was some significant geotechnical issues on the grounds that we wanted to build these fields on, which prevented us from doing it where we wanted to, and sent us back to the drawing board, literally, to redesign and move these fields to where they're currently being built. What we have is going to be a tremendous asset to this community, it's going to be a tremendous asset to the county, a tremendous asset to the students at Lewis Elementary, and most importantly, a tremendous asset to Buddy Baseball and the players and within that tremendous program that they have there. Without going on any deeper about Buddy Baseball and what a great program that is, and this construction project, I would like to request approval for Burke Construction for $430,740.35. Funds are allocated in account 001-1896-572-6327. The funds that we have appropriated from the state and from the county are reimbursable funds, so we will be spending the money and then receiving reimbursement funds from those organizations. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Langfeld. I had a question, I would ask if there are any members of the public wishing to comment to counsel on this item? Seeing none, are there questions from counsel? Councilman Schisler.
Yes, thanks, Carl, good presentation. Question, though, where specifically is it going on the Lewis property?
The Lewis property, if you're familiar with the way it's laid out back there, there are two softball fields on there. We are actually constructing the fields laying right on top of the existing softball fields. Due to funding constraints, we have to phase the construction where we're doing one field at a time. The initial field will be on the field to the west.
Okay, follow-up to that, then, is the material that's being used, and I'm not, I'm in favor of this, this is just a technical question, any problems with the percentage of impervious material?
No.
Could it cause any runoff into the school?
No, 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 that has all been looked at by the Geotech Group, not the, the engineering firm that has looked into this and has been reviewed by the school board and their construction folks for any type of, that specific question was asked during the construction process.
Thank you, Carl. If acceptable, would entertain a motion awarding a contract to Burke Construction Group in the amount of $430,740.35 for the construction of a handicap accessible baseball field to be located at the family recreation complex. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, any further discussion, counsel?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What, will this make this project whole? Are we done?
It is, there are, there is another field that has already been designed as part of the engineering services that we contracted with Cardinal for. Funding limitations at this time prevent us from building that second field, but it is shovel-ready when funds become available.
Okay, so we're going after?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, item 8F, a resolution approving the purchase of a new valve maintenance trailer for the Water Division. Deputy Director of Public Works, Nate Hale, will explain.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. City staff is requesting that counsel adopt a resolution approving the purchase of a valve maintenance trailer for the Water Division in the amount of $83,240 from the EH Wox Company. Funding for this purchase is in this year's budget. We originally requested $90,000 to cover the purchase. This piece of equipment is very special regarding the utility. This allows us to maintain our mainline water valves. And we did a lot of research this year trying to find a piece of equipment to handle this task, and this was the only provider that we came up with that had the, all the options that we needed to do this the correct way. And we've never had a valve maintenance program to date, and this is something that's desperately needed. Just due to the fact that when mainlines rupture, we've had issues in the past trying to isolate water lines. And if you let those things go on for hours and hours and hours on end, property damage gets quite extensive. So this purchase of $83,240 is allocated from account number 410-1922-533-6499. Do you have any more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hale. I'd ask if there are members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the purchase of valve maintenance trailer in the amount of $83,240 from EH Wox. Is there a motion? Motion in a second, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question.
Councilman Ross.
Nate?
Yes.
I've read the backup material, I'm trying to figure out what this thing is.
That was my question.
If I'm reading it right, dumb this down for me, it sounds like you're going to intercept the water pipe and route it to the trailer where you can turn the water pipe off and use that as the valve while you fix the valve, is that what this is?
No, sir, this actually has its own key that goes down into the ground and makes contact with the valve operating nut. So it actually turns the valve, we can turn the valve street-side, and then it actually has a computer system on it that tells you how much torque's actually being needed to operate the valve, and it records all of that information through the entire range of motion of the valve. That right there, we need that for maintenance purposes, that's an indicator of the condition of the valve.
So it penetrates the ground to the valve head without you digging a hole?
That's correct, because the valves have what's called a valve box assembly stacked on top of them, and it has a lid, so it's probably roughly six inches in diameter. They're all over, they're in pavement areas, they're in sidewalk areas, they're in green space. And so those are already there, long as they're still upright, we just remove the caps and we have access to that valve to operate it.
Let me know when this thing is in.
Definitely will do.
Yeah, we want to do a field trip.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. Next, a resolution approving the purchase of two portable lift station bypass pumps. Deputy Director of Public Works, Nate Hale, will explain. Nate?
Mayor, counsel, staff is requesting counsel adopt a resolution for a purchase of two portable lift station bypass pumps in the amount of $114,835 through the Florida Sheriff's Association contract, bid award number FSA 18-VEH16.0, spec 81. This year's budget includes $120,000 for funding for the scheduled purchase of these two pumps. These pumps are needed for emergency situations and maintenance situations that arise at our sewer lift stations. Current pumps that we have are older than I am, so we definitely need these. And the last hurricane that came through, which was Irma, proved that we needed more. So we're kind of spreading the purchases out through a few fiscal years.
Thank you. Are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the purchase of two portable lift station bypass pumps in the amount of $114,835 through the Florida Sheriff's Association contract bid award, FSA 18-VEH16.0, spec number 81. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you, motion carries. Next, a resolution approving the acceptance and disposition of personal property seized in accordance with the Florida Contraband Forfeiture Act. Police Chief Ken Albano will explain. Chief?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. Ken Albano, your police chief. And I got to apologize right off the top, this is a little lengthy item, and there's a lot of specifics associated with it, with account numbers and dollar amounts, so I'm going to stick to the script, if you will, on this one. But before you tonight, for your consideration, is a resolution approving the acceptance and disposition of personal property seized in accordance with the Florida statutes 932.701 through 932.706 collectively cited as the Florida Contraband Forfeiture Act. On January the 9th of this year, during the investigation of a drug trafficking case worked under Temple Terrace Police Department, case number 2019-000076. worked under Temple Terrace Police Department, case number 2019-000076, the police department seized $388,190 in U.S. currency, along with additional property and contraband. Utilizing the services of the department's designated forfeiture attorney, R. Michael Laranaga, the department filed a petition for contraband forfeiture with the clerk of the court, case number 19-CA-000668, and, as a result of those proceedings, was ultimately awarded final default judgment with respect to the aforementioned currency and property claim on June the 28th. Florida statutes 932.7055 subsection 3-5A mandates that local law enforcement agencies first satisfy all liens, administrative costs, and court costs associated with forfeited properties before depositing all remaining proceeds into a special law enforcement trust fund established by the governing body. Therefore, in accordance with the Florida Contraband Forfeiture Act, the following actions and expenditures are recommended. First, that $58,228.50 shall be paid to the law offices of R. Michael Laranaga in satisfaction of the legal cost associated with his representation of the city during the entirety of this forfeiture case. Payment to be made from account number 001-1411-521.49-51. Having done this, the remaining $329,961.50 shall be deposited into the city's designated special law enforcement trust fund restricted revenue account 001-0000-351.20-00. Then, in accordance with Florida statutes 932.7055 subsection 5C3, 25% of this remaining amount, or $82,490.38, must by statute be expended or donated in support or operation of drug treatment, drug abuse education, drug prevention, crime prevention, safe neighborhood or school resource officer programs. And to that extent, it is therefore recommended that $10,000 of this amount toward this mandatory requirement be donated to the Boys and Girls Club of Tampa Bay in support of the Sam and Louise Hashm Temple Terrace Boys and Girls Club. Donation to be made from account number 001-1411-521.82-20 utilizing forfeiture revenue from the special law enforcement trust fund. Moving forward, the remaining balance of this specified portion of these funds totaling $72,490.38 will be tracked internally to ensure compliance with this statutory mandate. Finally, that $79,400 from the special law enforcement trust fund be approved for expenditure in accordance with established city of Temple Terrace purchasing procedures to purchase a Ferraro 3D laser mapping system, which will be utilized during traffic fatality investigations, major criminal investigations, critical response planning, and other purposes throughout the city of Temple Terrace as deemed appropriate. Payment to be made from account number 001-1421-521.64-23. All of the aforementioned expenditures collectively totaling $147,628.50 comply with the statutory requirements of the Florida Contraband Forfeiture Act and will be paid utilizing forfeiture funds. In testament and assurance of this, I have attached the required certification documentation to the agenda item before you this evening. Should counsel approve the expenditures as requested, $240,561.50 from this forfeiture action will remain available for future use in accordance with the aforementioned Florida statutes and this council's oversight and approval. It is therefore recommended that City Council adopt a resolution approving the acceptance, disposition, and delineated expenditures of the $388,190 in U.S. currency, which was seized and ultimately forfeited to the city in accordance with established state law. It is further recommended that City Council authorize the police department to utilize or otherwise properly dispose of the additional property and contraband seized and subsequently forfeited during the same investigation and forfeiture proceedings. With that, I will stand for questions.
Are there any members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? I see Ellen Snelling coming forward.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. Just want to show my appreciation for Chief Albano, Temple Terrace Police Department, for keeping us all safe, putting your lives on the line every day and every night. And especially, as you all know, I'm in substance abuse prevention and treatment and because of my daughter, who's in recovery. But when you take down a drug dealer, I just think it's awesome, and I'm really glad that you got something out of it, which you're going to be giving it back to the community. And again, just thank you so much, Chief Albano.
Thank you, Ms. Snelling. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the acceptance, disposition, and delineated expenditures of $388,190 in U.S. currency, which was seized and ultimately forfeited to the city in accordance with established state law. It is further recommended that City Council authorize the police department to utilize or otherwise properly dispose of additional property and contraband seized and subsequently forfeited during the same investigation and forfeiture proceedings. Is there a motion?
There is a motion to approve the resolution as described and the disbursement of funds as described.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Second.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Councilman Schisler.
I'm sorry, I just have one question. The legal fees, is this something that was outside of your purview, or is this, were we required to utilize a specific attorney? $58,000, that's all?
We're not required, but the chief and I had a discussion about this, and apparently this particular attorney has been doing this for a long time, has represented us on these types of things in the past. I've assisted in forfeiture cases when I was with St. Pete, but it is a pretty specialized area, and you've got to really know what you're doing so that the perpetrator doesn't get any of his money back.
Long as we're viewed.
So... Councilman Ross.
Just to add to that a little bit, having worked at two different law enforcement agencies and seizing a lot of money in my career, it's not unusual for an agency to use an outside counsel for this. It's highly technical, and it's also, it has, you do better sometimes in court because it doesn't look like you're feathering your own nest.
Any other discussion, counsel? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Continuing, item 8I, a resolution authorizing Cardinal, Inc. to provide design services for the construction of water mains in the Bannockburn-Glen Arvin River Hills neighborhood. City Engineer Vinnie Carazo will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. Have the PowerPoint up, please. All right, this agenda item is, of course, you mentioned, a resolution to award to Bannockburn-Glen Arvin River Hills water main improvement, design services to Cardinal for $44,900. So, I'll give you a little bit of a background. In the past, it's common practice to lay utility lines in the rear easements or the backyards of people's homes. It works really well if there's an alley or an access on top of those utility lines for maintenance. So, there's a picture of a maintenance job in an alley, so you can get your equipment back there, your people back there. So, however, in Temple Terrace, many easements were not developed for access. And here's an example of the Temple Grove Estates. It's what's known as 61st Street and White Way. In 1959, they platted the subdivision, and with it, the yellow lines is where the 10-foot utility easement is. It's in the back of people's homes. And street view, this is how you look at it from the street. There's the 10-foot easement, and you can kind of see that there's fences and vegetation has grown over the easement through time. Another scene down the road, there's the 10-foot easement, and there's some of the obstructions, fences, and vegetation. So, the question is, how do you respond to a water main break? You take your backhoe and drive through the easements, or what? So, about 20 years ago, the city started replacing aging pipes and relocating them street-side. Example, there was the Willow Wick Project, Druid Hills, Temple Parks projects. All right? And you recall that the City Council recently passed Resolution 64-19 for the construction of water mains in the St. Augustine-Live Oaks neighborhood. That was on July 16th. All right? So, this agenda item starts another water main replacement project in a series of planned capital improvement program projects, replacing aging water lines and moving them street-side. So, on the screen here, there's four major projects that are in our CIP. The red portion at the very bottom is the St. Augustine-Live Oaks that's under construction, that you approved for construction. And the red one, that is the Bannockburn-Glen Arvin River Hills Drive, is the one that is for this agenda item. And those other ones, I put them there, are in the CIP, so you can kind of get the big picture. It's a series of projects. And if you can figure out, there's a little squiggly blue line, that's where the water lines are, and you can kind of see that there are some that are still in the rear yards. That's why we have these series of CIP projects. So, this will be on this one, it's a zoom-in. What we're doing is, it deals with the street-side rerouting of approximately 1,800 linear feet of new six-inch water lines. That's your red line in the middle of the picture. While we're abandoning the older water lines, that's the yellow ones in the back of people's yards. And then, we're also adding a 300-linear foot loop connection right above Florida College. So, with that, staff recommends the City Council approve a resolution to approve the expenditure of $44,900 for water main design services in the Bannockburn-Glen Arvin River Hills neighborhood to Cardinal Incorporated. With that, if you have any comments or questions?
Thank you. I'd ask if there are any members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item. Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion authorizing the use of existing professional services agreement between the City of Temple Terrace and Cardinal, Inc. for new water main design efforts within the City of Temple Terrace in an amount not to exceed $44,900. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second. Discussion? Councilman Ross.
It feels weird that I'm asking questions after we make a motion tonight. I don't know, am I on a time loop, or is that how we do it every?
Until there is a motion and a second, we should not have discussion on an item per parliamentary procedure.
We've asked questions before motions before, because how do I know if I want to make a motion if I can't ask a question?
I'm following the book, and I'm following parliamentary procedure. That's been reviewed by both the city attorney and the city clerk. City attorney, did you review this, and are we doing appropriately this evening?
Yes, generally, by Robert's Rules of Order, in order to have a discussion, the motion needs to be on the table. You can certainly, you can vote against the motion after you've had the discussion that you wanted to have, and that's the way to eliminate it.
I don't want to have a discussion. I had a question of the staff member. This is not my first council meeting. I've done this before. Something's different.
There can be, there can, I'm sorry, we're kind of confusing two things. There can be questions, but the discussion should happen after the motion has been made. But if you, you can ask a question.
That's my, I'm not trying to have a discussion. I'm asking a question, because I don't know if I want to make a motion or not, because I'm needed to answer a question. But anyway, I'll yield to the majority here. My question is, how long are we going to be doing this? I saw a lot of lines on that map. How many years, does anybody know the answer to that? Or is this something that's going to take us 10 years to build out the city? Or is this something that?
Yes. It's going to take 10 years to do this.
This is going to?
This is, this is actually like a two-phase thing. We go through a resolution to approve the design. Design gets done, we can't start construction until, we'll end up coming back to you after it's let out.
No, I understand that. I just, this is something, we're going to be doing this.
You're probably looking for this to be a long-term project. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Schisler.
Yes, thank you. How are we ranking these projects? In other words, the pictures that you showed in the beginning for the original easements were at the Groves, and now we're looking over at Bannockburn and Glen Arvin. How are we ranking what needs to be done first?
Remember this morning's budget meeting, there was talks about deferred maintenance? These projects actually have been in the budget for, I think, since 1314 when I looked at it. Well, this particular project, I went back five years, and there it is. So, staff, City Council had adopted, had wanted these projects, had a need for it, and it was approved already. It's just taken us this long to sort of, start the CIP engine running again.
I understand that, but I mean, is another area worse conditioned than this, or, I want to make sure that we're addressing the problem areas first. And is there something where the pipes are in worse condition? You know, it's getting most bang from our buck, and, you know, we're doing around the golf course, but there's areas off to the side that, are they worse? Are they in more need of this, or attention first? That's my only question.
What you're looking for is a water master plan, and on August 20th, I or Director Tinge will come back, asking for an update to our potable water master plan. The last one, I think, we had was back in 2004, but I'm sure that report had told us where the needs are for replacement.
These projects have been on the books for a couple of years, at least that I know of. I don't know that we have come up with a master plan that says this needs to be done first. Certainly, our conversations with our consultants certainly weigh into whether or not we decide to do Bannockburn or Glen Arvin first. I don't know that we've ever had a written-out plan to do this. That's what we're working on.
I just want to make sure we're doing the worst, the people that need it most, that's all.
Well, we trust that our department directors address the needs as they come about. I don't know that I can give you an answer to why this particular phase versus this particular phase. We know that they all got to be done. I don't know that, it may just be an arbitrary decision that these guys start talking to Cardinal about designing this portion versus this portion.
Mr. Hale?
You got something to add?
Sure. Yes, councilman, the way we rank those, at least right now, until this master plan is done, actually comes from our field staff. It all hinges on the amount of issues that we have.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Item 8J, a resolution to approve the award of lift station rehabilitation on Richland Construction to Danus Utilities. Invitation to bid 19-005. City Engineer Vinnie Carazo will explain.
Great. Can I get my PowerPoint again? Thank you. Okay, so, this is item 8J, and it's a resolution to award the construction of Lift Station Here's a picture of where Lift Station, the picture of Lift Station A from the street. A little more background here. So, when you flush your toilet or shower, your sewage enters the sewer system via a lateral to typically a gravity main in the street. There's a little side view of your house and where it goes in the gravity main. All the gravity mains in the neighborhood convey your sewage downhill to a low point for the area, for the region. At the low point is where a lift station will pump the combined sewage uphill and eventually to a treatment plant. There's your lift station. So, Lift Station A pumps the combined sewage of the western-central Temple Terrace region, north or south, and eventually to Tampa's sewage treatment plant. In the little red box there. All right? A little bit of history on this is, June of last year, City Council passed Resolution 73-18 for the design of Lift Station A. In March 2019, the design was completed, and in June of 2019, we went out to bid, bid number 19-005. The city received five competitive bids from contractors in response to the invitation with the lowest bid from Danus Utilities Incorporated at $296,890. In your agenda packet, there's actually the certified bid. I just summarized it here. So, the left is the lowest, and the rightmost is the highest. So, there's the five contractors there. All right? So, staff recommends the City Council adopt a resolution to approve the expenditure of $296,890 for the construction of Lift Station A rehab to Danus Utilities Incorporated. And questions?
Thank you. Are there members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the expenditure of $296,890 for construction of Lift Station A rehabilitation, construction to Danus Utilities, Inc. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Item 8K, first public hearing in Item 8K, first public hearing and reading to adopt an ordinance vacating a portion of Broadway Avenue right-of-way with conditions. City attorney Pam Shashon will explain.
Thank you. This particular right-of-way was platted in 1925 and was platted to be used as Broadway Avenue. It runs behind the Shell Station that is located at 8421 North 56th Street. This particular right-of-way has been the subject of some litigation for quite a number of years now, and was the subject of a shade meeting that was held last year. Pursuant to the authorization that council provided to me, a settlement was negotiated with the plaintiffs, and this ordinance would assist in that and would put an end to this litigation. To make it clear to the public, this is not, we are not giving up land that we owned. We merely had a right-of-way. That means that the fee simple, the right-of-way is about 32 and a half feet wide. Half of it essentially belongs to the city, because the city owns property on one side of it, and the owners of the Shell Station own the fee simple on the other side. So it does not change the ownership of the property. It just merely gives up the city's right to utilize that for the purposes for which it was dedicated, which was Broadway Avenue. The city manager has not just reviewed this, but I believe he actually went out and walked the property and helped make a determination as to whether it was appropriate to vacate this particular right-of-way. And it was determined after a survey was done that we were essentially going to keep a portion of it at the southern part of the right-of-way that runs and connects into the sidewalk in 56th Street. There's a large informational or a sign there that looks like it's been there for many years. There's also possibly a well near there, and by retaining the portion at the end, it would allow us access to that area without having to, again, walk onto the property of someone else. It was giving us plenty of room to do any maintenance that we need there. So that's why I'm recommending that council approve the vacating of this particular right-of-way with the conditions that are included in the ordinance. I've passed out a revised ordinance to you at the beginning of the meeting, which merely, there were already conditions, one of which is that the plaintiffs to the lawsuit do the recording with the county, because a vacation is not effective until the recording with the county is made. And also, that obviously that the lawsuit be voluntarily dismissed with nothing further requested from the city, no fees, no costs. And also that the city be held harmless for any type of litigation or claim from either the abutting property owner or from a third party that may somehow arise due to our vacating the property. And nothing, nothing possible is leaping to mind right now that I could give you as an example, but just in case, it puts the onus on the abutting property owner.
Are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, as this is a public hearing, I'd ask counsel if there are any questions. Councilman Shilera.
Just real quick, Mr. Shashon. The area that you show that's shaded there, that is the portion that we are vacating on our map in our attachments. Between that and the river, is that, are we vacating half of that easement and the other half is still the city's? Is that accurate?
The other half is still the city's. It's a, it's a long right-of-way. It is about 32 and a half feet wide. They're only getting 16.25 of that width. The rest of it remains ours. In a manner of speaking, you don't generally have a right-of-way over your own property. And since the city is the property owner on the other side, I call it the other half of the right-of-way, but technically there is no right-of-way because we own the abutting property. If we were to sell that piece of property, then we would still have a right-of-way over the new owner's property. And as far as I, we own the property down toward the river.
Right. And that's why I was asking the question, so if and when that property on the river gets sold, if the developer comes in, they want to put a sign there, something, we have access or ownership to that property that we can utilize to our advantage or their advantage?
Correct.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Other questions? Councilman Ross.
Yes, ma'am. I'm assuming from the map, I just want to clarify, if I'm reading this correctly, one of the concerns I had at the shade meeting, or not concerns, but topics I brought up, was I wanted to ensure that our police still had access to get underneath the 56th Street Bridge. They will still have. Okay.
Yes, and before anything was done here, when we were even just discussing whether we should consider vacating this, I did consult with the police to see what portion they were using, or if there was any area that they needed to utilize there, so that we could retain it.
Very good. Thank you.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the ordinance on first reading that vacates with conditions, a portion of the Broadway Avenue right-of-way adjacent to the east side of the property with an address of 8421 North 56th Street. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the vacating of the property as described.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Again, my apologies. I'm looking at the notes that were prepared by the city clerk and the city attorney.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, vacating and abandoning a section of the Broadway Avenue right-of-way, approximately 192 feet in length and 16.25 feet wide, adjacent to the east side of the property, having street address of 8421 North 56th Street, located in section 22 Township 28 South, range 19, East Hillsborough County, providing for recordation and conditions of vacation, providing for separability and an effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Is there a motion?
My apologies, it was premature. Yes, there's a motion to approve the ordinance as read.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Council business, is there any carryover business from our previous meeting? New business, first item under new business is appointment of voting delegation for the 93rd Annual Florida League of Cities Conference. City manager Stevenson will explain.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a request from the League of Cities Executive Director. Their conference is August 15th through 17th next week in Orlando, Florida. By understanding that three of you will be going to this conference, they, the executive director is asking for someone and only one person to be designated a voting delegate. So he's asked us to respond to them, no longer than is August 9th. So we put this on the agenda so that we can get some kind of motion out of council that I can relay back to the executive director, as far as which one of you attending would be a voting delegate. Do we just need, I'm sorry?
Who's going?
I'll move that we appoint Mayor Harado as the voting delegate.
Second, third.
Would entertain a, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries.
I was going to ask you if you were willing to be the delegate, but I guess you don't have any choice.
Is there any other new business to come before council? Councilman Ross.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Stevenson, it came to mind during the rezoning hearing earlier, and I was hoping that the Roberts were going to stick around a little bit, but the Whistle Junction property there at 52nd and Fowler, I'm well aware that it's in Tampa, it's not in Temple Terrace. I understand that completely. But Tampa's codes are not radically different than ours. I mean, it's not like it's the Old West. But that property has gone to, I mean, it's, it's pretty bad. And they were not exaggerating. There's mattresses piled up there, there's people parking there, I see people hanging out, I see them sleeping on the sidewalk in front of what the, it's, it is Dodge City out there. And can we have some contact or dialogue with Mayor Castor's office or somebody at Tampa to, to see what we can do? Because that's not up to Tampa's codes either. Well, I don't know that I can give you an assignment without everybody agreeing, but is that okay?
Absolutely.
Councilman Shilera?
Mr. Ross, years ago, back when I sat as mayor, we had sort of reached a friendly agreement with Mayor Buckhorn, and Joe Gross was here, and they were doing borderline sweeps with Tampa and Temple Terrace, and then, you know, it sort of faded away. I don't know what happened to it. So maybe our code can speak to their code and continue those sweeps, because those are some challenging areas on our boundaries. Like the Roberts came here tonight, said, oh, whose streets is it? Who takes care of it? I mean, everybody's looking at each other. So you're exactly right, that place is in need of, and people come through and say, oh, it's Temple Terrace, and it looks very bad on our image. So I don't know how you guys want to pursue it, whether it's to the mayor's office or the code enforcement folks, but, I mean, they did a big news debate out in the parking lot, and monthly owner was here, Buckhorn was here, it was great, and Joe was giving updates on how they were doing sweeps, and then it sort of, I guess, other things took priority. So something was in place. Maybe we could pick back up on that and continue on with it, but.
I see nods of agreement, and I see Mr. Barone. Mr. Barone, if you and Mr. Stevenson would be willing to reach out, and again, if you need, if you need my involvement at all, I'd be more than happy to, but would.
We will reach out on multiple avenues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this was before Mr. Stevenson, so it's not like he dropped, it just, we stopped getting reports, and I guess they, I mean, they got busy, they were shorthanded, and so, thanks.
Is there any other new business to come before council? As I'm turning it over to Mr. Stevenson, and Mr. Stevenson, I believe you're, you'll be addressing this in your report, but an item I would like on the record is I'm very concerned about an additional five cents per gallon gas tax that is being proposed to be put on our citizens across Hillsborough County with my perception of not due process. A late-week phone call to our city manager to push it through is not appropriate, and it puts Mr. Stevenson in an untenable situation. Mr. Stevenson, would you please kind of overview us on the action that, in the situation you were put in? And again, very concerned that the county is just assuming Temple Terrace will go along to get along and without any citizen input, without any hearings, to add five cents per gallon on, on, on gas is outrageous. Mr. Stevenson.
I don't know what you want to hear.
Well, city manager's report, but again, you got the phone call, and thank you for briefing and reaching out, but this is.
And I did have the opportunity to talk with Mr. Merrill late Friday with his attempt to try to explain why we weren't notified of this beforehand. It was sort of dropped on us last week, and certainly my concern with that was that I didn't have a chance to share with council before I brought a resolution approving this in a local agreement, which is what they want us to sign. It's my understanding that Tampa signed off on their portion of the interlocal, Plank City has done the same. We have to bring before you an interlocal agreement for council's approval that in fact does add a five percent, five cent gas tax on top of the six percent that we currently have right now. We have an interlocal agreement with the county for six percent that is good until 2042, if I'm not mistaken. This is on top of that tax. We have in fact clarified that. I thought maybe it was in lieu of, but it is not. It is on top of that. That being said, there is some statute that can be construed to say that if the interlocal agreements aren't signed before the commission, the county commission hears it, that it could invalidate the whole, the whole issue. So that is a matter of interpretation. I know that Mr. Shashon has had conversations with the county attorney about this as well. It has been, in my view, a little haphazard getting to Temple Terrace, and I expressed that concern to Mr. Merrill on Friday evening when we talked. That being said, they were, with the under, under the impression that we were going to bring this, a resolution to have council approve this interlocal agreement this evening and take it to their board tomorrow. After my conversation with Mr. Merrill on Friday, they are now looking to take this to their board on the 21st, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Which means we've got to get it before this council for approval at our next meeting. So coming before you in next meeting, and again, this is a surprise to us, as well as council, that in fact, the county is moving in this direction, but it appears as if everybody is moving in that direction, so.
Well, and again, I may be very naive on my part, but to me, it just, it appears, my perception is it's taxation without representation, and I think our citizens need to know that this is coming forward. I would encourage any of our citizens who are here this evening, or any of our citizens who are viewing, if you do not want 11 cents per gallon added as a tax, please be here at our next meeting and share your thoughts on that. We already pay five cents per gallon tax. The proposal is to add six cents, that's 11 cents per gallon. And again, it just seems very outrageous to me that this has not come before our citizens. And I wanted to make sure that our citizens were aware and had an opportunity to speak out on it.
May I ask a question? Thank you for bringing this up. Charles, can you, I feel like I missed the very beginning of this conversation. So he called, who's behind it, and what are they proposing to do with this money? I, I got the gist of it, but I don't, what was the phone call?
Well, the phone call, phone call initiated because I called Mike Merrill, I think it was on Wednesday, to find out what the deal was. We really weren't sure. There was, again, there was a push out of county attorney's office to get this before our council here this evening, and I wasn't prepared to do that until I found out.
Who started this? I'm sorry? Whose idea was this? Who started this?
You know, I think, and I don't know for sure. I don't know that I even asked Mike Merrill that. I certainly think that it's the council, not its council, but the commission that is pushing this. I will let you know this, that they just raised their bed tax from five percent to six cents. The planning commission was in my office two weeks ago, three weeks ago, talking about an increase in fees that are being initiated by the commission, substantial fee increases. I don't quite know what's going on, to be honest with you. I know that they're, they're talking about raising a bunch of fees.
Is, and you, we know for certain that Tampa and Plank City have agreed to this?
Yeah, we do, we do know that. We have confirmed that.
Have we spoken to anybody over at either place?
I've spoken to Bill McDaniel over in Plank City about this. You know, the five percent brings in another million dollars for us, brings in substantially more than that for them. It's again distributed on population. I don't want to turn down money, but in the same token, I just think that this council deserves a little bit of discussion on basically doubling.
I agree, and I completely agree with the mayor, that the citizens have been cut out of this too.
Well, there, again, the.
Councilman Chambers, think, okay, Councilman Chambers.
For, whenever it's brought to us, Mr. Stevenson, I'd like to know, he's busy. Mr. Stevenson, when, when this item is brought to us next, I'd like to know things like, if we say no, what's going to happen? Exactly what the money's going to be used for if we say yes? Things like that. I'd like to know more.
We've kind of run through that scenario.
But first, if anybody is opposed to this increase in the tax, coming to this meeting is not going to control that, because we're not being asked to vote yes or no on the tax. The interlocal agreement is something else that has to do with the distribution of the money if it is approved and collected. If you are against the increase in the tax, the best thing to do would be to go to the county's meeting on the 21st. There has already been one county meeting, and it was voted unanimously to send that ordinance forward for a hearing to the, to the Board of County Commissioners. ordinance forward for a hearing to the, to the Board of County Commissioners on the 21st. So that's really the meeting that people need to attend. What's been sent to us and is that we participate with the two other cities in the county in an interlocal agreement, we already have one for the six cent tax, and this is almost exactly the same as the six cent one, and it has to do with the distribution of the money if indeed the tax is passed. I asked the county, I've had six conversations with the county attorney about this, one with the Plank City city attorney, and I got called by the Tampa city attorney on Friday to talk about it some more. The, one of the questions that the city manager had asked me to find out about was a projection. So I did question the county about that, the county attorney about that, and he said that the county administration projects that the estimated receipts for Temple Terrace, if the ordinance passes, are in fiscal year 20, which would only be nine months, $421,000, and for fiscal year 21, it would be $566,000. And that, that was the information I received a week ago. I don't know if anything has changed since Mr. Stevenson talked to Mr. Merrill or not. But, but really, the, what they're asking us to do is to sign the interlocal agreement with regard to the distribution. I've been told that there is an ambiguity in the statute, that it's possible that if we don't sign the interlocal agreement, then their passing or approving of the tax would not be, would not be properly done without the interlocal agreement in place, but they said it was ambiguous, and it's possible that it wouldn't make any difference at all, and we could still do it after the fact if we chose to. But the five calls I had from the county attorney's office was, please, please, sign the interlocal agreement before we consider the tax.
And with respect to the city attorney, the thought of going along to get along just does not sit well with this mayor. I'm glad that you had five conversations, because you were showing much more respect than anyone on this dais, or any of the 26,000 citizens that reside in Temple Terrace. When things are done out of the sunshine and with phone calls and not here in the public, it is not appropriate, it is not clean. Anyone who is viewing, anyone who is in attendance, I will once again plead that you come to our next meeting if you have a problem with us signing an interlocal agreement that will raise your taxes from five cents per gallon to 11 cents per gallon. And please, citizens, if you feel strongly either way, I would encourage you to, to be at our meeting and to have your voice raised on what you would like to see us do with this interlocal agreement. Councilman Chalera, and then we'll go to Councilwoman Donahue, and then we'll go to city manager Stevenson.
There's obviously a problem with the designation of Temple Terrace, because we are always the last kid on the block to hear about whatever's going on. Now, I will tell you, the five cent, the six cent bed tax, that was discussed by the TDC. TDC, which is comprised mostly of hotelians, recommended it, suggested it, and wanted it, there was an in-depth discussion, then they made a recommendation to the county commission. There was discussion. We never heard about this stuff. We never heard about when FDOT was doing a study on, on Fowler Avenue. And it's like, we're just left in the sidelines saying, eh, don't worry about Temple Terrace. I'm not in favor of a tax, I'll tell you that right now. You already have an additional sales tax increase, you got a property tax increase, miller rates stayed the same, but values went up. It's increase, increase, increase. And you're making Hillsborough County a very tough, difficult place to do business in. But that's a discussion for a different day. My biggest concern is that we are not on the front lines of discussions. I got wind of this over the weekend, and I reached out to somebody in Plank City and said, hey, you guys heard about this tax? Oh, yeah, we're, we're all over it. One of their, one of their city council people. So how come we don't know about this? You know, and that, that's, that's disturbing, extremely disturbing. And these folks apparently are not getting the message. Last time when the mayor was at the MPO meeting and she blew out of her chair when everybody knew a study that was going to be affecting Temple Terrace, everybody knew but the mayor of Temple Terrace. So now we're talking about a tax that affects the whole county and Temple Terrace, and oh, by the way, we're going to find out, they wanted it done tonight, but since the city manager said, wait, whoa, 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 hold on, I need a little time to digest this and air it out some and inform my council, then, you know, we're, we're having another week or two done. But it seems like it's a done deal, because if the county approves it, they'll get it done, unless there's that loophole that the city attorney talked about. But I do want to make sure that from this point going forward, I have served this city government for a long time, and during my tenure, if something of importance came into the city clerk's office, the city attorney's office, or the city manager's office, council was informed pretty quickly, pretty quickly. And we need to know, I don't want to know after six, seven, eight phone calls, we need to know upfront, because we are, at the end of the day, the ones responsible to look at the citizens in the face and say, yeah, I really didn't know till last weekend. It makes us look really stupid sitting up here. And unfortunately, that's not the intent of this council, we want to be informed, and we want to be transparent, but the most disturbing thing was folks in Plank City, the elected body, very well aware of it. They're ready to, so we're going to vote for it, yeah, we've already talked about it, we, we've spoken, I've, I've spoken to the county administrator about it. We knew zero. So, you know, it's just, it's out there, and we're the last to know about it. So, you know, I, however you guys want to set it, through policy, but we need to know, when public records requests are made, you need to know about it immediately. When phone calls are being made, there's going to be a tax coming down the line, we need to know immediately. That's how it was in the past, and it certainly is very helpful to public servants to know what's coming up the pipe. We don't want any secrets or surprises, but tell us, staff wants to know, they don't want to be surprised. So I think we're all the same courtesy to be informed when something's brewing out there, because staff works for us, we work for the people. That's the way, look, go, go look at the chart, Temple Terrace, the flow chart, and that's the chain of command. So we need to know things upfront. I think my, my message has been made, but I would like to hear what Mr. Chambers had, had, you know, asked, that where this tax is going to go, what it's going to do. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Donahue, and then we'll go to Mr. Stevenson.
Well, I have two questions. What is the chain of communication between Hillsborough County and us? I mean, we're all appointed to all these different boards and meetings, it was, does that not fall under any of those? I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I, I don't know.
I'll ask, at, at any of the meetings that any of us have attended, have we heard about this additional tax?
No, no. So, so then I would request that someone from Hillsborough County actually come and make the presentation and not leave it up to the city manager to present why they've even done this. I mean, we're talking about, do you know how hard it is to get a unanimous vote from the B O C C? I mean, that, that's rare. So I, I would prefer that someone come and tell us, explain to us why they are doing this, what this money is for. You know, our knee-jerk reaction is, well, we don't want to pay it, but, but we don't know what it's for, okay, and why they felt so strongly, I'd at least like to hear. That doesn't mean I'm going to go along, I'm, I'm just, I'd like to hear. And I think we probably need to go as far as we can with this ambiguity issue and find out, are we the, are we the ones to stop this, or is it just going to happen to us whether we, whether we approve it or not? So that, that's my, my, my question, no one has the answer to, but my.
I do have an answer for that one question.
Oh, okay.
If, as far as what it can go to, money that is received pursuant to the particular statute that permits the county to do this states that it can only be used for transportation expenditures.
So they have decided to raise money for transportation in Hillsborough County?
They're entertaining it at a public hearing, they haven't really decided anything yet. So.
Mr. Stevenson.
Madam Mayor, in my discussion with Mr. Merrill, he did offer up himself to come and explain this at that point in time. I didn't, I didn't buy into that, because I was trying to figure out again where all this has come from and where's, where's it going, and wanted to explain this whole situation to this council before I moved forward. But certainly, I don't think it would be inappropriate for Mr. Merrill to send somebody, if not himself personally, to come and explain this, where all this is originating from. I don't know the answers to that. I, I wish I had more answers, I can certainly have another conversation with him now that I know the temperature of this council.
And I, just for the record, I'm extremely disappointed to hear how many phone calls have transpired, that, again, this council was not alerted until Mr. Stevenson was brought into the loop. Very disappointing. Mr. Stevenson, we'll turn it back over to you to finish your city manager's report.
Madam Mayor, I got just a couple other things. There, a, a couple of you have reached out to us concerning ransomware and firewalls and malware and whatnot. Mr. Keel, I'd like for Bob to come up and kind of explain to council proper what we really do, and we do have a lot of in place that we probably need to let you know about.
I received an email, I think it was last week, from Ms. Donahue, who was at the Florida League of Cities. I guess they were having a session on ransomware, and as you may or may not be aware, that three big, big hits were taken by local municipalities in the state of Florida. Couple of those agreed to pay out the ransomware, and it cost them quite a bit of money. It is proposed by, I think it was the United States League of Mayors, I'm not sure if I have that correct nomenclature there, but it was an agreement among mayors of very, of many cities to not encourage payment of ransomware to these people to keep funding their, their cyber crimes. And that's something that I believe the city is, should definitely not do, is succumb to paying out ransomware. But I, I wanted to somewhat allay your concerns, what is the city of Temple Terrace doing? We've been doing this for years. Ransomware's been around for, believe it or not, about six or so years, that really have been in the forefront of everybody's mind. But there's always, every kind of conceivable crime available out there, it's just that the methodology has changed, it's, you know, attacking people via email, it's attacking people via websites, it's telephone scams, it's infiltrating your computers and your networks with viruses, so it really runs the gamut. But just to let you know what IT, your IT staff does on a regular basis, as one of our major functions as a department, we do hunker down in that little room that nobody gets to go to, but one of the big things that we do is protect the data for the city, and protect the computers, and protect the, the infrastructure that you're using on a daily basis. And I, if you'll excuse me, I'm going to read some notes, because I was, I was a little bit brief with you, Ms. Donahue, when I sent you the email as to some of the things that we do on a regular basis, to let you know that we are trying to make sure that the data is protected, that our networks are protected. So as I had mentioned to her, we have antivirus, anti-malware software on every computer that the city owns, every server that the city owns. It's kept up to date on a daily basis, it's updated sometimes several times a day by the company, it's down, downloads updates to antivirus inoculations. Malware, spam, and phishing filters are occurring on all of our incoming email. It's a little bit different situation now that we're on Office 365, because we don't have that machine right here on premise, it's in the cloud, but as Microsoft does with their email systems, is that it's replicated like in triplicate out there in the cloud. So there's always duplicate copies of all of your emails, all of your files that you would, you'd save with their attachments, things like that. But what they do is they do an added layer of scanning through email, and it filters out a lot of the junk. You're still going to see a bunch of stuff coming in, because those filters aren't foolproof. But it does a lot more than you probably have on your home email coming in. So those filters are also in place, and we augment those, we go through and we check on those filters on a regular basis to make sure that they are filtering out as much as we can without really leaving you in the lurch and taking away useful emails that are falsely flagged. Of course, we have firewall setup between the internet and our networks here in the city to minimize the amount of intrusion or forced attacks that are trying to get into our system and disrupt our, our business. We have also deployed countermeasures to split our networks up into segments, so that if one segment is attacked, and it does fall victim to an attack, it doesn't affect absolutely everything in the city, or at least it, it keeps that from being a high possibility. We have implemented a lot more cloud computing in the last decade. Most of our governmental software is in the cloud now. Our recreation software is in the cloud, meaning that they are not on machines, definitely in our environment, in our networks, but they are on somebody else's managed network. It gives us a little less control over it, of all the little intricacies that we can do to the network that we would like to do, but we don't have to worry about somebody coming into our network and destroying data that is at another location, because those locations are also duplicated, triplicated in some cases. We do regular updates, Microsoft updates to all of our PCs, all of our servers, keep that stuff up to date. Every week, their, Microsoft is giving us all kinds of new stuff to make sure that, you know, viruses and little fixes to make sure that code can't be hacked. We, we monitor logs on a regular basis, if we see a little, some odd behavior coming into our network, we try to track it down and find out exactly where it's coming from and try to stop that. We're, we're now on Windows 10 on most of our machines, which has a, a product called BitLocker, which helps encrypt communication between computers, that helps to bring the possibility of being hacked down lower. The one thing that we've been really trying to focus on in the last couple of years is educating our staff on what to watch out for. And our staff is our strongest ally against this, but they're also our biggest weakness, because people that aren't educated about what to look out for when they get an email, don't click on that link automatically, don't download that attachment automatically. If something sounds funny, question it. If somebody sends you an email and says, that doesn't really sound like Mr. Schistler, he wouldn't send me something like that, I'm going to call him and find out, did you really send me this? Because it looks like his email address, but it really isn't. So it's stuff like that, that we're trying to get the employees to really become a little bit more cynical about just jumping into the pool and saying, I'm going to be answering this email right away, or I'm going to click on this link, or I'm going to download this file, because the person at the other end is in a hurry, or they're threatening me, or they're saying that this will happen if you don't do this. We're trying to get the employees to understand that, be a little bit more jaded with your interaction with technology, because there is a lot of people out there trying to scam you, and they're trying to either steal your data, they're going to try to steal your identity, to use it to perpetrate other crimes. So that's probably the biggest, it's probably the, the one we have most control over, educating our staff. But it's also kind of the biggest weakness that we have, because the staff that isn't educated continues to make the same mistakes over and over again. So I just wanted to, to kind of bring up to you, because Temple Terrace is not the biggest organization in the, in the United States with a computer system, but we're just as much at risk as these other companies that have been hit in the last year, and you've probably And you've probably heard, most if not all of these, Capital One, just recently, Facebook, two or three times, Quest Diagnostics, Marriott International, Orbitz, U.S. Postal Service, British Airways, Uber, and Equifax. They have been hacked to get your information, and then what happens to your information? It's sold out there on the dark web. And the one thing that I guess I'm a little bit disturbed about, because I, I haven't really been able to find out too much about the attacks that happened to these other municipalities in Florida, as to what measures they had in place. I'm hoping they had as much as we have right now, if not more, but it's hard to get any detail as to finding out exactly what it is. But, I did read an article from, I think it was a city clerk at Lake City, which was one of the organizations that just got hacked. The, and, and these, the ones in Florida, actually, the hacking was due to an employee clicking on a link in an email, and becoming, and it actually infiltrated their system, and it started encrypting data. She was saying that they are digitizing all of their city records, and going back to the Civil War. And she said, we've got phone lines back now, we've got our police system back now, we've got our email back now, but we may never, ever get back all of the stuff that we've scanned in. It just may not be recoverable, because they really didn't have any way to bring that information back. So, I just wanted to let you know that we're on top of, on top of this as much as we, you know, possibly can. No solution is 100% foolproof, but we're going to make it real darn hard for somebody to take advantage of the city of Temple Terrace and mess with our data. So, if, if you have any more questions about it, I feel free to ask me now, and, or you can also email and call me, you know, later on this week if you have more.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stevenson.
I think RIT does a tremendous job trying to protect us, so, and it's a difficult job. Just, Madam Mayor, one other thing, I know it's been a long day for everybody, if I can ask Mary Ann to come up to the podium. I have some, some bad news. Mary Ann's last day is Friday. She has accepted a job with the Planning Commission, much to our dismay. We're sorry to lose her, although she's moving to the Planning Commission with the potential to do some awesome stuff down there, and get into a position I think that would benefit her in the long run. We're going to miss her, she's been around for a year and a half, two years. So, I just wanted to let you know that Friday is her last day. We're having cake tomorrow, if you guys want to come by and join us, 1:30.
Can we vote to not let this happen?
Well, we took a vote, we were going to change it to a desk, and then we decided we probably wouldn't do that.
That's okay.
The chief would probably have a problem with that, so...
But, anyway, I, I know that Mary Ann has contributed a lot to us, and we're short-term here, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you very much for your service.
We, we do have a new planner by the name of Celeste Lau, Celeste left.
She was here, yeah, she left, yes.
She, and, and we'll get her introduced to council, she is actually not taking Mary Ann's place, but taking Andrea's place, who left a few weeks ago, so, we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you all so much for being so welcoming and kind to me always, I really do appreciate it, and I hope to see you back here, because I will be working on, as Charles said, on the Planning Commission side, but still for the city of Temple Terrace in some capacity, so, can't get rid of me that easily. I'll be back in front of you, hopefully soon, soon enough, so, thank you again so much.
Thank you.
Again, I genuinely appreciate each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Charles.
That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Very good, is there any other business to come before council this evening? Meeting will stand adjourned.